The regu- hello? The regular meeting of the Norwalk City Council is now called order. This evening, we are honored to welcome Pastor Danny Casas, Lead Pastor of Remnant Church, who has been serving the Norwalk community since 2017. Pastor Danny is passionate about writing and running. He is driven by a mission to lead a church that brings healing and growth to Norwalk. Following the invocation, we invite Young Marine Sergeant Isaiah Estrada to lead us in the flag salute. Young Marine Sergeant Estrada has been part of their program for six years. He probably volunteered at several city events, including the Norwalk 5K on the Halloween parade. Everyone, please stand up as they both lead us in prayer in the flag salute. Right after, we will be taking a group photo with Pastor Danny and Sergeant Estrada.
Thank you, Mayor. We could bow our heads. Most heavenly Father, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for the gracious gift of life, and we pray for your blessing and strength upon citizens of Norwalk, also upon the nonprofits, businesses, churches, schools. We also pray for those less fortunate. We lift up the unsheltered in our community. We pray for strength, protection, and blessing upon them. We also pray for our senior population, and our youth, and all of our children, Lord, that you would bless them and prosper them, and we'll be sure to give you all the honor, the glory, and the praise. In all this, we ask in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen. Take off any coverings you have. Your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So getting you a new mic here. Chief Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, thank you. Councilmembers Rios.
Here.
And Valencia.
Here.
Vice Mayor Perez.
Here.
And Mariela.
Here.
City Attorney, report, please.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Members of the City Council, the record should reflect the City Council convened for closed session with the members that are present tonight in closed session, that the three items that were listed for discussion were announced prior to recessing, and that as to each of those items, Items 1, 2, and 3 as listed on the agenda, those items were discussed with the City Council, but there is no reportable action at this time. And, Mr. Mayor, it's appropriate to continue with the open portion of the meeting.
Thank you. City Council comments, Councilmember Rios.
Hello, and welcome, everyone, to our meeting today. Just a couple of things. I want to begin by congratulating all our upcoming seniors at our respective high schools. I know graduation season is upon us, so congratulations to all of you seniors who are graduating from high school, and I wish you the absolute best as you continue your career or whatever goals and dreams you have moving forward. The last couple of weeks have been pretty busy. We, as a leadership team, have been working on different things, including attending the ICSC conference, and during that conference, what we do is we meet with many potential developers, organizations, companies, restaurant and entertainment hospitality, brokers, developers, and businesses with the sole intent and goal to bring something back positive to the city of Norwalk. So I'm hoping that we have some exciting opportunities in the near future, including those that we currently have in place and hope to see some positive movement soon so that the city begins to enjoy all the great things coming to the city of Norwalk. And also want to welcome one of our newer businesses here in the city, trip.com, which they are located at 12501 Imperial Highway, Suite 204. I did attend their, like, official ribbon cutting, so if you guys are looking at booking a trip, please do so using one of our business vendors here in the city. That's really how we give back to our community by generating tax revenue. Which reminds me, for those of you that don't already know, the city of Norwalk is a passport issuance facility, so if you are renewing your passport, if you need to get a new passport, please consider the city of Norwalk to book your appointment and come and take care of that stuff, because, again, those nominal fees and costs come right back to the community that we all live in. So what else? That's, I, the last thing I want to say is, there's been a couple of students that have from Norwalk High School and John Glenn High School, young ladies that I met while they were in school, and have now recently completed their college graduations. So I know that there's at least three young ladies that completed a college degree. I just want to give one shout out. I have her name here, but there's two others, but for Monique Avalos. She recently earned her master's degree from Cal State University Long Beach. Go Beach, I'm an alumni. And Monique graduated from John Glenn. So congratulations to her and the others who have come from the city of Norwalk, our own very, own community, and gone on to bigger things by earning their academic degrees in college. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Valencia?
Thank you. I'd also like to congratulate all of the graduates. We have, you know, it's, what are they called, promotions, or from kindergarten, preschool, they are the cutest, and that was my favorite part of being a board member, is seeing all the graduations and all the exciting expressions of our students. And Dr. Olaya, thank you for joining us tonight, Norwalk High School's principal. Isn't that one of your best memories of the year, is seeing those graduates just about to start their lives and their futures and all kinds of experiences? And we definitely want to be a part of them, so if we can help in any way, shape, and letters of recommendation or what have you, I'm always telling people, let us know, let us know, because we want to be here to support. And then the graduates of Little Lake as well, you know, our graduates there, it's amazing, it's an amazing time and very exciting, so congratulations to all the graduates as well. And then I want to also, there are many, of course, as Councilmember Margarita Rios stated, but we do have a commissioner who just graduated. Martha Mesa went back to school, the Cerritos College, and she received an AA. We're very proud of her. Yes, I know, it's amazing. I also want to report on the, we attended, several of us, the Community Family Guidance Center fundraiser event at the Sheraton Cerritos, and that was May 8th. Beautiful event for a great cause. I actually just got a text today, "Hey, can we charge your card for that $50 you said you were going to give?" And I was like, "Yeah, sure," you know. It's all for a really good cause, and they do such great work. And then, is it? Do they want some more money? Is that Victor calling you? The other thing is, the Japanese Southeast School and Community Center, they had their awards, and I attended along with our Historical Heritage and Public Safety Commissioner and Ms. Greenwich, and it was such a beautiful event. We also were there, joining us was Assemblywoman Blanca Pacheco. We were given a tour. It was a great center, community center, and their, their directors, their Board of Directors, and lots of volunteers have been going on for like 20, 30 years. It was just a beautiful event to see. And they send their best, Margarita. They said that they missed you, but I explained that everybody has a whole bunch of things to do, but they were very happy that we are there in support of their efforts. The other thing I want to say is congratulations to the Door of Hope Youth and Family Resource Center. They were named by Senator Bob Archuleta's 30th District 2025 Nonprofit of the Year, and we partner with them, the Mercedes Quintanilla, the executive director, we partner with a lot of her efforts, and she just helps a lot with so many of the projects that we work on, so I want to congratulate them. And then I'm really looking forward to this Sunday, June 1st, the Norwalk 5K, a second one. Somebody says that we used to have one, we've had one in the past, like way back, but it's great that we brought it back, and this is our second one, so really excited about seeing a lot of our faces, a lot of our friends, community, and others from surrounding communities who love running, who love exercising, and to be here to do, to take part of it. It's amazing, so really excited about that. And that's what I have for today. Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor Perez?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I don't want to go into too much detail, but I do want to let everybody know that the bulletins are out for this month. We have one for Social Services, it highlights all of the special events that are going on, as well as the Norwalk Senior Center. If you know anything about both of these centers and locations in our city, you know there will be dancing. So there is several opportunities to dance at the Norwalk Senior Center and the Social Services Center. Please take a look at their bulletins, they have some great information. Additional classes are being offered for our seniors and our families in our city, and all of the information can be found in those bulletins, as well as our city website and on our social media pages. I want to echo what Councilmember Rios mentioned about the International Shopping Center Convention. They had us walking around like crazy. I think one day, Monday, I had over 16,000 steps, going from meeting after meeting after meeting. We like to say, Jesus calls it speed dating, to go from one location to another, but it was great to be able to be there together as a Norwalk community with my colleagues, you know, just to hear and see what's going on. So it was definitely a great time spent. We also attended the California Contract Cities Annual Municipal Seminar. We were in sessions for two days, there was a total of eight sessions. We talked about building a resilient community. We had a session on lobbying partnerships with federal, state, and different delegates around us, and we did a huge public safety panel, and I was able to moderate that panel and really engage in some great conversations. And I do want to thank my colleagues, the mayor, Mayor Ayala, Margarita Rios, and mayor and councilmember who's not here tonight, Rick Ramirez, were all there, and it was, it's great to have you all there. I know, Anna, you weren't able to attend this year, but to have that support for our city as a leadership role in contract cities. We've mentioned the graduations. Give a shout out to the parents that are, have graduating students, whether it's preschool, kindergarten, middle school, et cetera. You parents really put a lot of time, energy, heart, and love into your students, our community students, and if it wasn't for your support, they couldn't be going where they're going today. So congratulations to all of our parents. And I want to thank Mayor Ayala, our public services team, public safety, and our Park and Recreation Services. We had our Memorial Day celebration yesterday, and it was absolutely gorgeous. It was truly a great, memorable event, and as you start to see some of our events coming this next summer and these next couple of months, you're going to see them at different venues, different locations, and I really have to give it a shout out to the team, because we are moving these venues, these events to different venues, and they really are presenting them with a wow factor. So thank you, Mayor Ayala, for encouraging that, and to the entire team for really, once again, putting together a class act Memorial Day service. So thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. I would ask Sonia, is there, if there's anybody watching this right now that wanted to get additional information on the 5K, what would, what would be the best way to do that at this juncture?
All of our information's on the Norwalk website.
So go to the Norwalk website?
Under Recreation and Park Services, all the information for the 5K is there on the webpage.
Okay, great. Yeah, to the Vice Mayor's point, Memorial Day was executed really well, considering it was a new location. You know, the staff executed perfectly, like she had mentioned, you know, rec, public safety, public services, communications, and it looked like we'd been doing it there for the last five years, because, you know, the staff just has an ability to make that stuff look easy. So I want to thank Jesus, I want to thank all the departments that were involved in that project. It, I think it really turned out well. The other thing I want to point out for, like, to Public Services specifically is, they did a Public Services Expo at Patterson School, and it was, and it was really well done. I mean, it was really well done. The setup was great, they held the kids engaged, and it, like I said, I had never seen one like that, but of course, it was celebrating National Public Works Week, so I hadn't, you know, if we had done them in the past, I hadn't seen it. But I got to go to this one, and like I said, it was perfect, because it's Public Services Week, but, you know, they really, hugely successful, in my opinion. Okay. Yeah.
I just, I got the other name. I just wanted to mention this, because it's so, so important, the graduates. So the first one I mentioned, I'm going to give her another shout out. Her name is Monique Avalos. John Glenn High School graduate, earned her master's degree from Cal State Long Beach. Then Samantha Preciado, John Glenn High School graduate, earned her engineering degree from Cal State University Long Beach. Both first-generation graduates from a Norwalk local high school. And the fun part that I wanted to add to this is that both young ladies, again, as I mentioned earlier, I met them in high school, wanted to get involved, volunteer, learn more about their community, particularly civic engagement, and so both young ladies volunteered for my election campaign when I was running for this seat, the Norwalk City Council. That's how I met them. So super, super important that we highlight these young ladies who worked so hard to earn their college degree, and the fact that they're local just is a bonus. I love it. So congratulations to both of them. Thank you, Mayor.
Tonight, we are recognizing the John Glenn School Boys Soccer Program for the remarkable season, advancing to the CIF Southern Section Division VII Finals for the first time in school history. With 15 victories, this year's team earned the most wins in 27 years. Their season stands as a milestone accomplishment for the program under the leadership of head coach Luis David N. Cecil. Let's give a big round of applause as we welcome this team. We'll bring up, we'll bring up the team and Coach N. Cecil out to the front here to assist with presenting certificates to the players who are present tonight.
Good evening, citizens of Norwalk, and I want to thank you, Mayor Ayala, and I want to thank the Council and the city of Norwalk for recognizing this impressive feat from our boys soccer program. It's a manifestation that there is talent here, and there is a lot of heart in our city, especially with our young members of society, our young athletes, and it is about time that our students and our citizens here at Norwalk are recognized for this, and if we made it once, we're going to make it again for the year that's coming, and as part of the staff and as part of someone that works at John Glenn High School, and someone that works in the community here in Norwalk with the club soccer team, it's really been amazing to experience this, and the city has grown, has grown on me and has a special place in my heart, so if I could keep on giving back to the city, even through its youth members, it's a big honor. It's a big honor, and I appreciate everybody for the support, and I appreciate the recognition for my boys, which is, they deserve it the most. They're the ones that went through a lot of hoops and hurdles to be able to make it this far, and if I'm not mistaken, we did a research, and I believe we are the first high school boys soccer program to make it to the CIF finals in the history of the city. So please give a huge applause and a shout out for my boys, please. And also a huge shout out and a huge, and a huge praise to the staff at John Glenn, the teachers, from the custodians, the teachers, the lunch staff, our principal, our athletic director, because, because the lessons and the disposition for them to be for our children, for them to be for, there for our children, is very important, and it's a very, it's very huge that they all help and become part of this. My principal and my athletic director are also here, so I want to give a huge shout out and recognition as well to Dr. Jennifer Padilla. She also helped us through this process, and she was very, very supportive. Can I get a, please, can I get a round of applause for her as well, please? And as a former college athlete, as a former high school athlete, and seeing as a high school coach I am as well, athletic directors don't not get enough love. They deserve it a lot. They've put out the fires, and they put in a lot of situations for us to be able to help us out through our day-to-day as coaches and athletes. So can I get a shout out for Linda Parra as well, our athletic director at John Glenn? And thank you so much for this recognition, and I will be announcing the name of the boys for them to come up and earn their hard-earned recognition, and I appreciate you all very much. Thank you. This player is not here with us today, but can we please give a round of applause to Mauricio Duque in his honor, please? Okay, this kid is here. Recognition to Alan Silverio. Joseph Martinez. Angel Velazquez. Juan Martinez. And really quickly, before I continue, the players I just mentioned are freshman and sophomore members of a varsity program, which we all know is very difficult to achieve, and is very difficult to become part of, so just a big recognition for that, so that way they can lead us into the future as members of the school and members of the, of the community. Next up is Johnny Rios. Giovanni Hernandez. Juan Navarro. Pedro Gomez. Ernesto Savala. Armando Aguz. Alejandro Avalos. Ernesto Torres. This player is not here with us today, but can we get a big round of applause for Luis Vergara? Ricardo Rodriguez. Juan Gonzalez. Sebastian Morales. And we have two seniors that unfortunately are not with us right now. They are celebrating their hard-earned trip at their grand night in Disneyland, so when I call their name, I would like a recognition for them as well in the form of applause. Edgar Gutierrez. And Luis Ramirez. And I would also like to call upon Jimmy Torres, our assistant coach, for the John Glenn Boys VSA Program. And I would also like to call our athletic director, Linda Parra. And our amazing principal, Dr. Jennifer Padilla. And as I mentioned before, this isn't just a boys soccer effort, they're the ones that we entrusted to put all the effort, but there's really a team effort, so thank you so much for everything, and I appreciate the recognition of Mayor Ayala and the city of Norwalk and council members. Thank you so much, and have a good rest of your day.
Yes.
Tonight, we celebrate the achievements of the Norwalk High School Wrestling Team for qualifying for the Masters Tournament, which features top athletes from 588 schools across the southern section. The tournament qualifiers are Jimmy Butello, Enrique Flores, Sarah Ramirez, Sitali Modesto, and Amber Farr, the CIF finalist. Let's congratulate and give them a round of applause as we welcome them to the front. And we'll have them come forward and then we'll take a group photo.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you so much for being out here tonight. Can we give a big round of applause to our student athletes? And since I have to follow the Glenn Soccer Team, I would like to call up our principals, Dr. David Alea and Dr. Moreau, if they can come on up, please. And then I'd also like to call up one of our athletic directors, Deanna Dominguez. Those three individuals are responsible for a lot of the success that we find here at Norwalk High School and we appreciate them. So I'm going to call out some recognitions. Sarah Ramirez for making a Masters Tournament. Again, the Masters Tournament is out of 588 schools in the southern section. Sitali Modesto. Jimmy Butello. Enrique Flores. And this young lady not only qualified for the Masters Tournament, but she also qualified for the State Tournament. She went 2-2 at State as a junior and she's a two-time CIF finalist as well, Amber Farr. And then I'd like to introduce our coaches. Josh Largo is our top assistant coach. Coach Soto is our boys varsity head coach. And then I'm Brian DeVries. I am the girls varsity head coach.
Okay, lastly, we're honoring the recipients of the Norwalk Environmental Awareness Scholarships made possible through a partnership between Athletic Services and the City of Norwalk Educational Alliance. Each $1,000 scholarship was awarded to high school seniors who live in Norwalk and maintain a minimum 2.0 GPA. They must also participate in community service while demonstrating a strong interest in environmental issues. Winners were selected by the Norwalk Education Alliance Committee and the Norwalk City Council. Congratulations to the following winners. Sadie Alvarado, please come forward. Nayali Flores. Yeah, let's give a round of applause to him. Next, we have Denise Oliva. Yeah, these are out of order too. So do we have Serena Karango? Are you here? Okay. I'm getting all these out of order and I apologize. Do we have Sadie, Nayali? Denise, Tanya, Serena? Those are the five we need. Is everybody up there? Big round of applause for everybody.
It's going to be put to good use.
Okay, Mr. Gomez, can we have your city manager comments, please?
Yes, mayor members of the city council. These past couple of weeks have been pretty busy, as you have mentioned. I also attended Contract Cities and just want to say that Contract Cities is probably one of the strongest advocacy groups for local control in the state of California. So I just want to make that comment because I think it's worth our while to be part of the association. Also, I want to congratulate our newest past president for Contract Cities, Jennifer, our vice mayor Perez, and lots of accomplishments throughout the year. And it's, I think, maybe you're the sixth president from Norwalk, the most in the history of Contract Cities. So Norwalk continues to lead regionally, so I'm really proud to be part of the leadership group. We also went to the International Shopping Center Conference and as you, the council, mentioned, I think it was a great success. We have had some really great meetings and look forward to them becoming a reality here in the city of Norwalk. And I appreciate your time that you spend with the developers, with the brokers. They really want to hear from you and I think it's important that you speak directly to them. So I want to thank you for attending and spending time with us and with the brokers and potential tenants. Next, we have the Teen Alliance Program Scholarship and Recognition Dinner video that I'd like to share with you and the community. Great event, well-attended, and great theme, by the way. And with that, we can play the video.
On Friday, May 2nd, the city of Norwalk celebrated a special milestone, the 30th Annual TAP Scholarship and Recognition Dinner. Held at the Norwalk Arts and Sports Complex, the evening brought together students, families, alumni, and city leaders to honor academic achievements and recognize the next generation of leaders. In celebration of the program's 30th anniversary, TAP alumni were invited to return and join in recognizing the accomplishments of the 2025 graduates. The evening began with a warm welcome and opening remarks from the Norwalk City Council. Guests enjoyed dinner, raffle prizes, and an inspiring student speech by Caesar Perez.
I've been at TAP since I was a freshman. I think one thing I enjoyed the most, getting to know people. It was really good for me overall, coming out of the quarantine and just not talking and socializing to people in general. And I feel like it really improved me as a person.
Underclassmen and graduating seniors were recognized for their accomplishments and scholarship winners received well-deserved praise for their hard work and dedication. The night included a surprise for Rosie Lozoya.
I have a special gift for Rosie. I think it's only fitting that we need to recognize her after 20 years of leading this program.
So it was just, it caught me by surprise, but I thank you and I thank everybody, the parents mostly, and the TAP kids who, you know, make my job easier because they are the ones that I work for.
The 2025 TAP Scholarship Dinner was a night filled with celebration and reflection. Thank you to all who attended and supported the event and congratulations to all of our graduating TAP volunteers.
Great celebratory event for the Teen Alliance Program, but also Rosie, who has been instrumental in keeping the program alive. And many of these young individuals are part of our recruitment for our Parks and Recreation Department. So it benefits them while they're going to high school, but it also benefits us, the city, because they're very experienced once they join the team here in Norwalk. Next, we have the bi-weekly review video. With that, we can play.
Norwalk went all out to celebrate Mother's Day this year. On May 8th, the Social Services Center hosted a Mother's Day Magnolia Waltz Senior Dance. The celebration was a heartfelt tribute to mothers in our community. Then on May 9th, the senior center brought the glam with a Mother's Day Spring Tea and Fashion Show. Dressed in stunning Great Gatsby style, the ladies sipped tea and strutted their stuff on the catwalk. Spring has arrived and so has tea time at the Harget House. On May 17th, Norwalk residents got to enjoy a delightful afternoon at the historic home, filled with guided tours, fun games, hands-on crafts, and plenty of tea to sip and savor. On May 17th, the city of Norwalk's Recreation and Park Services Department hosted a Water Safety Day at the Norwalk Aquatic Pavilion. Families enjoyed a fun and educational afternoon filled with interactive demonstrations, rescue techniques, and hands-on activities all aimed at swimming smart and staying safe. In honor of Public Works Week, which takes place between May 18th to May 24th, the city of Norwalk's Public Services Department hosted the Public Works Expo at Patterson Elementary School. Students had the opportunity to learn about the vital role Public Works plays in keeping our city running smoothly.
Lively and many activities here in the city of Norwalk. Come join us. Thank you. Thank you for your remarks.
Thanks, CISO. Council, there are eight consent items for consideration. Mr. Boy, are there any persons wishing to speak on the consent calendar?
I do not have any speaker cards.
Okay.
Move them.
Motion second.
Councilmembers Rios.
Aye.
Valencia.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Perez.
Aye.
And Mayor Ayala.
Aye. Do we have any appointments to advisory bodies tonight, council? None? Okay, next, we have Resolution Number 25-DAS-16, Budget Amendment for City Project Numbers 7228 and 7230 to appropriate street renovation funds to Highway Safety Improvement Program Cycle 6. Staff report, please.
Yes, mayor members of the city council, Mr. Mario Maravill will present.
Yes, Mayor members of the City Council, Mr. Mario Mera will present.
Good evening, good evening, council, mayor, Vice Mayor. I'm glad to be here today to talk about this particular resolution. This resolution deals with Project 7228 and 230, which were Cycle 6 HSIP projects. These particular projects are already completed. This is the final step to contract closeout. These last two items that remained open were open due to final payment questions and scope issues that arrived at the end of the project. But after much meetings and evaluations, we finally come to a conclusion and acceptance to where we are, and all parties have reached agreements. So with this particular resolution, we're able to go ahead and make the final payment, and then this project is completely, both of these projects are completely closed out. Are there any questions to that? Thank you.
So the recommended action is?
The recommended action is to approve the resolution that's before you today, and that will allow us to make the final payments.
Okay, thank you. Teresa, do we have anybody who wants to speak on this item?
No cards have been submitted.
That's time for council.
I'll move it. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Rios.
Aye.
Valencia.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Perez.
Aye.
And Mayor Yalla.
Aye. Item number 11, Citywide Classification and Compensation Study. Staff report, please.
Yes, Mayor members of the City Council, we will have Karina present and introduce the consultants that will also be presenting to you tonight.
Good evening, Mayor Yalla, Vice Mayor Perez, and honorable council members. Behind me, you will see CPS HR Consulting Representatives Igor Shigaliev. He's a technical specialist, and Vicky Quintero Brashire, Client Services Director. In a while, they will be coming up and giving their portion of the presentation. But this evening, at the direction of City Council, the city initiated a comprehensive classification and compensation study in partnership with True Comp and CPS HR Consulting. This marks a first formal review of the city's classification and compensation study. The study evaluated job families, career fields, and classification titles to assess market competitiveness, internal equity, and structural alignment. Over the past nine months, the consultants have thoroughly studied compensation models across comparable cities, including the city of Carson, Downey, Gardena, Pico Rivera, Torrance, and Whittier. This benchmark aligned Norwalk's compensation practices with the broader public sector market. During the study, key issues were identified, including internal equity discrepancies among positions, market competitiveness of salaries, pay compensation within job classifications, stagnation for employees at the top of the pay scale, and challenges in employee retention and talent attraction. Again, CPS HR Consulting Representatives Igor and Vicky will present their methodology and findings, providing data-driven recommendations to support equitable, competitive, and sustainable compensation practices. I would like to present Vicky Quintero Brashire and Igor Shigaliev to the front. Thank you.
Hello, and thank you so much for the invitation to present to the City Council tonight. Again, my name is Vicky Quintero Brashire. My colleague Igor Shigalev is here with me. We work for a consulting firm called CPS HR Consulting, which is headquartered in Sacramento. Tonight, we're going to introduce ourselves a little bit, talk about the project and the methodology, and then dive into the findings and the recommendations that we have been working with, with the executive team and HR for the past four or five months. CPS HR is a joint powers authority that was formed in 1985. We are a nationwide firm. Most of our business is in California, and we provide human resources consulting services to public agencies and nonprofit organizations. I have worked at CPS for over 25 years. I oversee several of our consulting function divisions. Classification and compensation is one of them. My colleague behind me, who you'll meet in a few minutes, Igor Shigalev, has been in the classification and compensation industry for over 30 years in both private and public sector organizations, and he's been at CPS for more than five years. When we were introduced to this study, it was well underway. The city had partnered with a firm called True Comp that is a technology firm that gathers compensation data and does a few other things for public sector agencies across the United States. Last year, we formed a relationship with True Comp to provide their clients with compensation consulting services since we're technical experts in that field, and they really handle the technology aspect. The benchmarks, the classification benchmarks that were identified by the city in True Comp had gone through a matching process, and all of the data were collected. And so we were brought in at that point to assess the information, look at the city's five-step salary structure, and then facilitate several rounds of discussions with what we found, meaning how was the city's position against the market, and also what issues were there, if any, related to the way that the city structured its salary schedule. Through lots and lots of iterative discussions, we designed a nine-step salary structure, which we'll show you in a few minutes, that aligned with the market data. And then we provided the city some information and best practices on how to slot the employees from a five-step system into a nine-step system, which, as you can imagine, needs a lot of thoughtful consideration. I do want to point out that this is our first presentation to all of you. We are by no means finished with the project. It is wrapping up, but there are several things still that need to be finalized between us and the city with regards to finalizing pay grades and such. So please understand that the information that we're presenting to you today is probably about 90% there, and we think we might be invited back to present a final structure and information in a few weeks. As you saw earlier, Karina provided the list of comparator agencies against which the city was benchmarked. So there's these six agencies. They were well-vetted throughout the organization. There were also 44 benchmark classifications or jobs that were surveyed or matched between the city of Norwalk and those six different agencies. Again, that matching process was conducted before we came on the scene, but we did have a lot of discussions with True Comp and the city to understand what the vetting was of those matches, because as you can imagine, those matches have to be really solid in order to hang your hat on the resulting data. And so we understand that those matches were very carefully considered through various processes and meetings with the city and True Comp. And after everything was said and done, 44 of the city's jobs had met the threshold of a sufficient number of benchmarks against those cities. So 44 benchmarks accounts for about 40% of the total number of jobs that the city currently uses, and that really does align with best practices. We never go into a study thinking that we're going to find 100% of the jobs with a match in the comparable labor market agencies. Different cities use different jobs differently. They title things differently. They just do business according to their own needs. And so in this situation, having been able to find 40% of the overall classifications with a match is a really great sign. That gives us sufficient number of data and a solid foundation with which to then extrapolate the data to the rest of the salary schedule. On this slide, what we're trying to show is the fact that we feel very confident with the amount of data that were gathered to allow us to confidently extrapolate those findings to the rest of the jobs in the schedule that weren't necessarily benchmarked. So in the example on the right, you'll see that we have identified a level three in a job series, for instance, that was benchmarked, and it provides anchor data. All of your jobs have a relationship to each other, and it's strongest in these job families, where you have a three, a two, and a one. And so as the benchmark moves, so does the resulting levels that are attached to that benchmark, and that cascades through the rest of the salary schedule itself. And so, again, having that 40% of your jobs matched gives us a strong enough net in order to lift the whole salary schedule accordingly. All right. Let's talk a little bit about the results. Most of the citywide benchmark classifications aligned with or led the market. So you'll see here in this pie chart that 64% in green indicates that 28 of the total number of jobs, or 64%, were at or above market, which is great, great result. 36% of the jobs matched lagged the market, or 16 jobs. And so what that indicated to us is that we needed to have some discussions with the city to see where those lagging indicators were so that we could lift accordingly. We want, the city wanted the salary structure to meet the market so that you can be competitive and retaining and attracting talent. And with that, I will hand it over to Igor.
Thank you. So the pay grade separation is one component that we're looking at, and it's how your pay grade separated from one another in terms of percentage-wise. And of course, we found that the current pay structure that the city uses has inconsistent separation. We will demonstrate in the next slide. For now, I will just say that what it does is it impedes the possibilities for hiring qualified staff, or it creates obstacles for career growth and opportunities, and so on and so forth. And of course, creates lack of progression in employee growth and employee salaries. And then, in the next slide, actually, you see your current pay structure, the one that the city uses as of now. And what you see, first of all, the step A to step E, the separation between those steps, we call bandwidth or spread, is 21.5%. 5% separation between each step. If employees hire that step A or step B, it takes them three to four years to reach the maximum. And now they're at the maximum, and the structure is not moving, so employees pretty much at the glass ceiling. They at the top of their career growth or wage growth, if you will. You also can see that the very last column indicates the separation between pay grades. That separation actually is inconsistent in terms of percentage, and it varies from 0.0, you can see it, 3% to 10%. The reason we would like to draw your attention to this inconsistency is because it actually creates an issue when you want to promote employees or you want to create a job family. Let's say you have planner and planner senior, and you want to separate planner senior, which is expert-level classification, enough to make employee to work for it, to motivate employee to move to the next level. 2% or 1.5%, as you can see here, is not enough separation. We also cannot jump over the pay grades because there's no integrity in this structure. You cannot say we always separate supervisor from subordinate by four pay grades, because at every point, that separation is different. The other thing I wanted to mention is that in this current system, the way it exists, it's very difficult not only to promote employees or move employees vertically, but also to assign jobs to appropriate pay grades and create so-called job architecture. And the pay structure actually is a foundation for that architecture. In the next slide, we're actually discussing how, why it is important for us to propose development of pay structure that will align with the labor market. And we're not talking here about employee wages. We're talking about the structure of the range for each job, because when we go to the labor market, we see that each job has value, and that value expressed in minimum pay and maximum pay. And any employee, depending on experience or tenure, would fall between that range. What is important here for us is to identify that exact range that would be competitive for your organization, would be competitive with the external labor market, but also would be equitable within the organization, where you have appropriate separation between jobs that you would not create pay compaction or compression, we call it, or they wouldn't be separated too far, too much, that we call dispersion. And of course, we finalize, finalization formal of approved structure will follow with our proposal. This is the, on your screen now, is the proposed recommended structure that we believe will serve your organizations much better than the current one. And the reason for this is, first of all, it has nine steps, and it's more, it creates a wider range for employee to grow. It creates prospects for employees that every year they can move. In the current structure, they move 5%, but they get to the top very quickly. Here, you have nine years to move, and the separation between each step for employees would be 3.3%. It is less than what you have now, 5%, but then again, 57% of all your staff already at the maximum, and they're not moving anywhere unless you move the pay structure. In this system here, you will actually be allowed not only to move employee to the next step, but it will give you some room to move the structure every third year or second year, whatever you decide. You can see that each pay grade is separated by fixed 5%. What you can say is that if the, in a labor market, if the benchmark that supervisor always has to be 20%, the range, 20% above the range of the subordinate, then you can say we always separate supervisor from subordinate by four pay grades. And in this case, it's easy to calculate, it's easy to administer this kind of structure because it has internal integrity, and it's a matrix system. In the next slide, we actually want to summarize why it is important and what actually it will do for your organization. Well, first of all, again, it will align the pay range with the labor market range. Why it matters? Because you want your job to be competitive, because otherwise you cannot recruit, retain, and reward qualified staff. And if you don't motivate your qualified staff, you don't promote your qualified staff, the staff generally gets disengaged. The second one is redesigning structure. It will allow you to better administer employee movements and decide where jobs belong within your organization. Create a good job families and effective way to move from one job to another, from entry level to junior or senior, and so on and so forth. level to journey or senior and so on and so forth. Allows wage growth for employees, not only horizontal when they move from one step to another, but also vertical that they see how much they're going to make if they're being promoted to the next level. When we assign pay grades, we will take into consideration, again, market range. So if, just for example, if the accountant in your relevant labor market starts typically at twenty dollars and goes up to thirty dollars an hour, then that's the range that we will recommend for your accounting job to be assigned to. And it, again, it will accomplish, again, those two tasks, external competitiveness and internal equity. Employee wage increase will be easier to administer and again, they will be, they will have more room to grow because you have nine steps. And this system actually exists in many organizations. It's very effective. The entire federal government has ten-step system. The only reason we propose nine-step system is because we think that statistically it's easier for you to administer employee position within the range because step five immediately becomes a median of the range, fifty's percentile, so-called. And of course, this is the best practice. We think that this way you will be able to control your cost and yet compensate your employees and it will be sustainable for the organization. The key consideration if salary schedule actually is adopted and this, again, is our recommendation. We believe it's a good for your organization. We did it for other clients, for other organizations, and we know it will work better than five-step system. It's of course the new system for you and as any change, it may be challenged. Now, the important thing to know is that no employee in this plan that we recommend will have reduction in pay. In fact, it's the opposite. Ninety-nine percent of every single, all your population, all your employees will have pay increase. Now, some will get, you can see in this slide that not everybody will get exact same increase. And those who actually way below the labor market, which jobs we will assign to higher pay grades will receive higher pay increase. The majority of your employees today, the fifty-seven percent, is already at the top. They will not be in a new system. They will be somewhere in the middle or maybe in step six, seven. They, not only they will have, again, more room to grow, but also they will immediately receive pay increase. Generally, population will receive, will be assigned to nearest step above what they, today's salary. And if this is happening, the increase will be anywhere within three point three percent range because that's the separation in the new proposed pay structure. Some employees will fall below the new minimum and they will get more than three point three percent because their jobs are below the labor market and therefore employees will have to get higher increase to be at the minimum of new range. Those below the labor market will receive larger increases. That's our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. So just to summarize very quickly, we created the best option for the city of Norwalk in terms of the structure. So what Igor was referring to were the number of pay grades, the range between the minimum and the maximum of each of those pay grades. Then we worked very closely with the city to assign the current pay grades or the current classifications to the appropriate grade. And that is when the market data came into play. So we have this new foundation that we're recommending and we made sure that the pay grades, the new pay grades for all of the city jobs make sense in terms of meeting the market. So now all of the pay grades meet the market or slightly exceed in some cases. Where the employee pay movement comes in is if the schedule is adopted, then we need to help the city figure out how to move individuals from the five-step system to the nine-step system. And that's where assigning each employee to the next closest pay grade will result in nearly everyone getting a pay increase of some sort. And it's a variable from person to person. So we think that is very important for everybody to understand that it's variable. It depends on what your current salary is, how far your pay grade moved in this new system, and where your next nearest step is. So we want to be very clear on that point, too. But we truly believe and understand that this is the best system that will address the issues that the city is currently facing with its five-step system, primarily the fact that fifty-seven percent of the employees are currently at the top of the five-step range. So this gives people more room to grow in terms of their wages. And that concludes our presentation. Thank you so much again for inviting us and we hope to see you again in a few weeks with the final structure and outcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may just make a couple of comments. The city council requested a total compensation study and I think what, the goal that was primarily on your mind was to bring everyone to market. And I think that the structure achieves that and the secondary effect is that retention and recruitment will also be in the forefront as well. So with that, we're happy to take any questions that you may have.
Let's start out, if we have any speakers that have requested to speak on this. No? Okay. Council comments, questions?
I'll just make a comment, Mayor. Thank you for taking the time, energy, and direction from this council in order to make this happen. I'm glad to see that it was done. I'm sad that this is the first one of its kind to be done to this scale because I think it's extremely important. But I definitely agree, Jesus, you, I was thinking what you were going to say, recruitment, retention, and really looking at the overall general health of our compensation study for our employees. So thank you for bringing this forward and sharing it at this level. I'm really looking forward to seeing how in the next couple of weeks it really plays
Margarina?
I'm sorry, what was the young lady's name? Vicky? Vicky. So you talked about, well, I have two questions. So the first question is, is it then possible that someone who's, let's just say hypothetically at a step three will move to like step five?
Sure, yes. But recall, please, that the old system, it won't look the same. We have a nine-step system now. And so, yes, you could technically move from a step to a four, to a three. Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. And my second question was, you talked about next steps and one of those, you mentioned working with the leadership team, the city, to come up with now, what is this going to ideally look like? Can you elaborate a little bit on that and what you envision this to potentially look like then?
So what we have created so far is the entirety of the system. So we have slotted all of the current pay grades into the new system, so from the five-step to the nine-step. Right now, we have a handful of jobs that are still being looked at to ensure that they are adequately leveled at this time. So some final decisions need to be made. Once that is completed, we can finalize the structure itself and understand as people move, what the cost to the city will entail and what exactly each job will be assigned to. So the final pay grades need to be determined, the final cost, the movement for each person needs to be verified as well.
Right.
So that's for every single employee.
Those two pieces are really important.
Very important. We've done the bulk of the work, but as I said, you know, it's a good idea to step away from the data for a few days, look at it, debate it again, look at it again, make other decisions, et cetera. So we really want to make sure that the final decisions are accurate and everybody's understanding of them.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that explanation.
Thank you.
I think the only comment I'd like to make is that the, just having the system that we do have have credibility because I think before being on council, I worked for the city for a number of years and I think that was always the question in people's minds because you could always look at a certain part of it and say, oh, this isn't, you know, there's inequities here. You know, this should line up with this and this should line up with that. And I don't care how much you manipulate it, if you don't have a structure that ensures, you know, that there's, you know, equality and everybody's separated, you know, correctly, everybody's getting paid the same amount. I mean, I just, I think this is such an important thing to do for that reason because now this thing's actually manageable. And that used to be something I experienced when I was on staff is that the HR managers, everybody just trying to figure it out, you know, because we're adding positions, we're reclassifying positions and suddenly things don't line up. And over a period of time, that can get pretty out of whack. So to me, doing this is the reset. To get back to something that is more predictable, more easily managed and whatnot. So yeah, I'm really happy with what I've seen of your work and I think it's, to me, hugely important for Norwalk to go in this direction.
Thank you. May I respond to that? Would that be okay?
Yes, ma'am.
You've really hit the nail on the head. This work is ninety percent science and ten percent art, you know? And even though we're dealing with numbers, there are, you know, different considerations, different nuances that are taken into account. The other thing that I would respond, Mr. Mayor, is Norwalk is in exactly the same position as many, many other places. It is very difficult to take a step back in the heat of the moment and look at your structure and completely reset it. And so what the city is doing is very modern or will be doing, is very modern and we're very pleased to be part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to say something?
I just wanted to say it's very promising and it's, I look forward to its completion and I think that it will bring a lot of really good, a lot of really good work to our employees and overall to the city. Thank you.
Okay, we've had our comments and questions. We have no speakers, so we're open for motion.
So tonight, we're receiving file and we'll come back to you with a more.
Gotcha. Okay, then we roll into oral communications. I have a few cards here. I'd like to start out with, looks like Lopez. Ms. Lopez, are you here? I can't quite make it out. It looks like L-E-C-E.
Can you guys hear us out there? I don't know. Can you hear? Can you hear us, Levy?
It's an N or an R, I'm not sure.
I hear an echo. Hear an echo, but I don't know, what I mean, like I don't know if we're coming across.
It appears that it's spelt L-E-C-E-N-I-A.
Yeah, that's.
Oh, it's a Y.
That's correct.
Aquí en Norba, a los inquilinos de Norba, si podrían apoyar el tres por ciento. Ya ve que los seniors les pagan muy poquito cada mes y necesitamos que sean menos y que les cobren menos del tres por ciento. Y también para los...
Yes, it's Yesenia Lopez. She's here to support the only a three percent rent control hike and because seniors are paid so little and they have like a fixed income.
Y también a los inquilinos, que ya ve que les suben mucho a la renta y no les suben a los sueldos, sería muy importante que los apoyaran.
And also to all the renters because they're not raising wages very much and it's very important to support the people that are renting.
Quisiéramos que eso fuera posible y que se hiciera, que nos apoyaran el tres por ciento.
We want to see if that's possible and see if you can support on a limited, only a three percent rent control.
Porque los seniors están sufriendo mucho por acoso que les están cobrando mucho y no tienen para pagar.
Because the seniors are suffering a lot because of harassment and having to pay too much for rent.
Me gustaría mucho que apoyaran esa ley, el tres por ciento para ellos y para los inquilinos y para los seniors.
So it'd be very important to support that law, only a three percent limited rent for rent control for seniors.
Y muchísimas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
A quien corresponda escribo esta carta con el fin de pedir su ayuda. Para las personas de la tercera edad que estamos luchando con las rentas muy elevadas, por lo cual nuestro presupuesto es muy pequeño y estamos completamente limitados. Atentamente, Marroquio, Gaona, y Elpidia, Gaona, El Judi, Yerena.
Hi. This correspondence, I write to you to the ends of asking for your help. The people of, in their senior, the seniors here are struggling a lot because of elevated rent. And our income is very low, so it would help very much and that's why I write to you and I would really appreciate it sincerely. Mar...
Marroquio.
Marroquio y...
Y Elpidia.
Y Elpidia.
Gaona.
Gaona.
El Judi, Yerena.
And Judi, Yerena.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Lucia. There's no last name.
I'm going to speak in my first language. It's in Spanish, a history language. It's in Spanish, but he translates for me, okay? My name is Lucia Veloz. I'm from the union of neighbors of Bell Gardens.
Her name is Lucia Veloz. She's from the renters' union in Bell Gardens.
We achieved a rent control of 3% and a CPR of 50%. This lasted three years and it affected many of our other communities of Sela. Many of our close邻近 cities were supporting it, like Carahay was an example, like Maywood, like Commerce.
And this was an achievement after three years of struggling, also something that nearby cities have, have supported us, so we're here to support them, cities like Cudahry and Huntington Park.
Why am I here? Well, it's because I know that the rent in Norwalk is even higher than in our cities and this still has, has to do with, with this city because poverty is very high everywhere. Cities like Norwalk are an example of something else. Our economy is way higher than in my community's, but there are also people like them who don't have the level of income they have. I was asked to investigate the percentage of rent in Norwalk, where a house with two bedrooms is paying $2,500 to $3,000.
So I've, I've come here because I know that rent here is higher and I've, I'm here because I know there's people like, like the people behind me that, that rent here and are suffering because of it, so I've took on the, the task to, to see how much rent is here and, and it's from-
From around $2,300 to $3,000 a month for, for a two-bedroom house here in Norwalk. How can we solve this? You can't level the poverty until there's a rent control.
How can we control this? Well, we can't stabilize income and rent until we have a rent control here in Norwalk.
Where there are protections, where there are those protections for the seniors, because what I'm seeing and understanding is that the unemployment rate is also falling and something has to be done now to support their people in this community.
How are we going to help? It's by, by implementing rent control because unemployment keeps rising and unless we do something, it's going to be unsustainable.
The time is too short for my speech, but the more important is you can see the people here. It's all people, but maybe in the next meeting, we can bring more, more people and you can see how the problem is really big. And please, we need translation this time, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Irma Lopez.
I'm Irma Lopez and I live in the city of Carahay. Please, I ask for the next meeting if you can translate, please. We don't understand anything about what the council is trying to do because we don't know the English. Thank you.
Hi, she's Irma Lopez. She asks if maybe you can have a translation for the next meeting just so we can understand a bit more of what's going on in, in the, in the meeting and, and we can have someone to professionally translate.
Thank you. I'm here to ask for your support for the seniors in Norwalk who are suffering from rental charges from landlords, from landlords of the houses, of the departments, because it's hard to pay for rent.
I'm here to, to ask for rent control because a lot of the renters are, are experiencing harassment and it's very necessary.
In my city of Carahay, we passed the rent control in eight months and it's a big relief and big change that has really impacted the people that, that are renting in, in our city. 3% and protection for seniors. That's a great achievement. We benefited from it. I was sick of psoriasis. My hands were very red, very affected by psoriasis from the stress we had.
So the 3%, 3% rent control and renters' protections was something that we achieved and it really helped us out. She personally suffers from psoriasis which affected her hands and they were very red and she was, she was suffering from that.
Now, thanks to God and thanks to the relief from all the stress I was suffering, my, my condition succeeded and now I'm in, I have full health because before I was making decisions of putting food on my table or paying rent, but now, thank God and, and because of this relief, I, I feel a lot better and- I'm here to ask for your support for the seniors who are suffering because of the high rent and it's, it's really stressful for them, so they, they really need the rent control. Yes, and also to other cities like Bell Gardens with the 4%. Thank you. We want to be like other cities like, like Maywood and Cudahry and, and Bell Gardens with a 3% and even Huntington Park with a 4%. So Norwalk, Norwalk should be the next city. Yes, thank you. Thank you for your attention and I would like to ask you to, to look at what the people here in Norwalk are going through and, and really support them in getting this rent control because the people here are suffering and we need to really support them and thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Irma Ramos.
Hi, my name is Irma Ramos, longtime resident of the city of Norwalk. And I'm here because I've seen the changes that you've made for the city of Norwalk. It has been in my lifetime, from when I was in high school to now, I've seen such a great improvement. It's beautiful and I, and I appreciate it, but I think a lot of these changes, if we don't pass rent control, are not for the current residents of Norwalk. It's for the people who can afford the city of Norwalk. Right now on Zillow, the average rental price for a one-bedroom in the city of Norwalk is $1,900. To not be rent burdened, which means you're not paying more than 30% of your income towards rent, you would have to make $1,900 to live here, more than $1,900. I think I calculated it to about six, more than $6,000 a month. When the city was making its presentation about the pay scales and brought up the tables, the highest table on there, on the highest step, on the ninth step that you guys were proposing, was about 4,000, 4,800. Even if you made the highest amount on that table on that pay scale, you could work for Norwalk, but you couldn't afford to live in Norwalk. Mayor Ayala, you used to work for the city of Norwalk. Imagine what kind of inequity you're looking at that you can work here. You can serve Norwalk, but you could, but Norwalk doesn't pay you enough to live in Norwalk. I've seen people face housing insecurity here in the city of Norwalk, not just our elderly on fixed incomes, but young people, educated people, degrees from USC, UCLA, and yet they can't find homes in Norwalk. They want to live in Norwalk. This is a beautiful city that you guys have made more beautiful. But again, for who? For the rich people coming out here, people who can afford million-dollar homes, people who can afford $2,000 for a one-bedroom? Norwalk needs to protect everybody and they need to, and you guys need to install rent and rent control now. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Margarita Cornejo.
Good evening. I'm Margarita Cornejo and I aspire to have your heart and to pass rent control. I'm asking for you to look into your heart and to pass rent control.
Good evening. My name is Rosa Osigueras and I represent a number of people in my building. It's Center Point Villas. They, like me, need a lot of help from you because what we get from the insurance doesn't help us. The rent has gone down a lot compared to what we have got. We don't know what to do. Not only me, but a lot of people who have had to leave to live with their children or somewhere else because they don't have the level of income to pay for rent. Every year, they get a lot of money and we don't know what to do. That's why we invited you. We hope you can help us. We appreciate you. I think she took off, she talked off script, but she talked from the heart, right? But I'm just going to read what was here. So yeah, my name is Rosa Osigueras. I've lived in Center Point Villa's apartments for eight years. I'm worried because they're increasing our rent by up to $100 per year. At the rate we're going, I'm going to have to leave because I can't afford what I get from social security. I can't sleep well anymore thinking about where I'm going to go. Rent control would help me a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Daniel Chavez.
Actually, I got most of my things from, from articles and statistics. While children under 18, particularly, particularly black children face the highest risk of eviction, older adults are also significantly vulnerable to eviction. Approximately 1 in 9 renters threaten with eviction each year or over 50, with nearly 170,000 seniors age 65 and older facing this threat, making them particularly vulnerable to homelessness due to their fixed income like social security that doesn't cover rising rent or the scarcity of affordable housing options. Unfortunately, seniors also face discrimination, being stereotyped, seen as more burdensome and financially unstable, as well as having more difficulty in moving due to mobility issues and other health concerns. In 2024, California saw a 3% rise in homelessness, reaching a record high of over 187,000 people. California has nearly 25% of the nation's homelessness population. Today, I saw a study by Ed Source found that California's K-12 schools saw a 9% surge in homeless, homeless students as federal funds decrease. The main cause of this surge is the economic struggles families are going through, which is only an estimate, which is only estimated to worsen, given that there isn't enough plan, there isn't a plan to reestablish funding. And the new cuts to food banks, which were just announced by the governor, reducing aid to Cal food by, from $60 million to $8 million a year. Yeah, so these are stats that I found and just wanted to, to bring this to the attention so we kind of understand the situation of rising rent and thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Next speaker is Jessica Flores.
Hello again, my name is Jesse Flores, Executive Director of the local nonprofit Norwalk Unidos. Through our Norwalk Tenants Union, which is just a sampling of a few of our other members that we have, we advocate for renters' issues to be addressed, such as securing safe, healthy and affordable housing. Today we have some of our tenants' union expressing their support for rent control. While they do that, I'll be touching on my appreciation for last month's city manager updates on the smoke-free multifamily dwelling ordinance, so just those updates were really appreciated because that's another issue that many of our residents are addressing is just the effects of secondhand smoke in their apartments, especially those living in Belcourt apartments. So you know, and with many of our tenant members being older adults, they're especially susceptible to health impacts from secondhand smoke. The risks of, according to Tobacco-Free Life, the risks of secondhand smoke are serious for everybody, but especially so for the elderly. Since older people are more likely to have heart problems and many will have problems with their breathing, adding the risks of secondhand smoke into the mix is particularly dangerous. And these health impacts get compounded by the stress of having the me ever-increasing rent. So according to the research paper, "The Impacts of Rent Burden and Eviction on Mortality in the U.S. 2000 to 2019," published in November 2024, in the peer-reviewed journal Social Science and Medicine, quote, "People who spent a vast portion of their income on rent were more likely to experience poor health and had a greater risk of premature death." And so to ensure healthy homes here in Norwalk, we urge the city to take action, not just in enforcement of the smoke-free ordinance, but also pass rent control, because the research shows that really it does impact health similarly to smoking. And so, you know, for, as the research shows, it's really a matter of life and just poor health that we work on these issues together cohesively. So I appreciate you all listening and see you next month.
Thank you. Next speaker is Lilia Chavez.
Buenas tardes, miembros del Consilio, mi nombre es Lilia Chavez, de la Unión de Vecinos de la Ciudad de Bel Gardens y vengo en apoyo a estas personas que están pidiendo a gritos, que ustedes los apoyen a lograr su control de renta, que es el 3%, que es lo que están pidiendo con sus derechos y protecciones, que vendría siendo lo mismo por decir a, en la Ciudad de Bel Gardens nosotros logramos este control de renta junto con mis compañeras y estamos pidiéndose para ellos. Si son unas personas de la tercera edad, yo quisiera que se pusieran la mano en su corazón, porque por esas personas que están sentadas ahí, ustedes están en ese lugar donde están, escuchenlas, volteamas a mirar, porque si están presentes hoy es por alguna necesidad. Vivan de su retiro y yo creo que de su retiro ya no pueden estar ellos pagando una renta muy alta en las condiciones que se están viviendo ahorita con esta economía. Si una persona regular que trabaja un horario regular en nuestros trabajos normales, no nos alcanza. Ustedes se pueden imaginar a ellas que viven solamente del retiro y que tienen que pedirle prestado de un mes al otro para poder a completar, es triste la situación. Pongámonos en el lugar de ellos, ¿por qué? Porque nosotros después vamos a estar sentados como ellos, porque el futuro viene y nosotros no sabemos cuántas vueltas de... Tóquense el corazón y vean ustedes, ellos están necesitados, quieren que los escuchen, quieren estar aquí porque ellos vienen a pedir algo por la necesidad que están pasando. Si todas las personas normales estamos pasando por la gran necesidad, ¿se pueden imaginar ellos? O sea, ellas ahorita en este momento ya mi trabajo les dan, solo su retiro. Entonces yo vengo en apoyo a ellos y que los escuchen, del corazón les digo, nosotros venimos en apoyo a ellos, porque nosotros no sabemos cómo después vayamos a estar. Ay, yo ya me fui de corte, pero esa es mi manera pues de referirme pues a ellos, yo vengo a eso y yo de verdad les pido de corazón, si nosotros en Bel Gardens lo logramos, yo creo que ustedes pueden hacer lo mismo y apoyarlos, porque ellos están aquí para dar el grito, para que los escuchen, quizás alguno les da el nervio de estar aquí, pero ellos tienen que estar ahí.
Yeah, she's Lily from the Renters Union in Bel Gardens and they're asking for a 3% stabilization of rent control and if you could just put your heart to them and have some empathy and because they have a stable income of social security and people like her who have, who work is already like, the rent is very difficult to achieve, you could just imagine how difficult it is for them. So you know, we will be there one day, you know, struggling and old ourselves, so we should kind of empathize with them and have the heart to help them out and stabilize rent with our rent control, so yeah, thank you.
Muchas gracias y espero que esta voz que nosotros vinimos a hacer por ellos se ha escuchado por ustedes, porque le repito, ustedes están ahí por la comunidad, muchas gracias.
Thank you, Lilia.
So thank you and yeah, like I said, you know, we're here because of them, so and you're there because of them as well, so you know, if you can just find it in your heart to help them, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Boyd, do we have any other people wishing to speak that you know of?
No other cards are here in my desk mirror.
Okay, there being no further business, let's see, this meeting is adjourned.